Our minutes or anything, we, that was put into the actual full council. It can't come back to committee until it's sent back to committee. It was not sent back to committee.
It's my understanding that until it's passed at full council, it can still be discussed in committee.
Once it gets sent to full council, we're supposed to wait until it gets sent back. You're the one that told us.
It was sent back. It was sent back into.
No.
Yeah, it was. There was a problem with it.
You, you stated there was a problem. It was not voted on to be sent back. Watch the minutes. Is there anything else you would like to talk about that's actually something that we can refer to?
Yeah, it's related to public lands and buildings.
Kurt, is there anything else that you brought up?
I, I have a whole thing here that's not tied to that. But it is a public lands and buildings issue.
Is it anything that we're talking about?
So when did we start not allowing discussion on anything that's in open committees?
If it's in open projects and it's not at full council, we can talk about it. That's what I just said. Is there anything else that you have?
May I add something more?
Yes, Vicki, please.
Just stay right here, Kurt. Erin, if I understand correctly, and this is what's been done with previous councils, is that, and I'm remembering a council minutes, and it was quoting our former, former council president, Sis Love, that at committee meetings, anybody can come to a committee meeting. They can, under public participation, discuss, talk about whatever they want. However, if what they talk about has not been referred to the committee and is in the open projects list, all the committee can do is listen to the individual talk. There will be no interaction of discussion back and forth, no talking, no decision making. So with that being.
So with that, we can, okay.
With that being said, then I believe Mr. Finkhouser.
Yeah, Mr. Finkhouser is the one that told us that we couldn't talk about things once they were sent to, to full council until they were referred back. That was over a year ago, a couple of years.
I, I don't recall that, but I'm not saying I didn't say it. But continuing, should the North End Fire Station be sold since the idea of selling it was originally tied to the purchase of the YMCA building? Or should we keep it? Obviously, the fire department personnel feel like they have space issues, and this needs to be addressed so that they can adequately do their job. Would keeping two stations have a potential benefit to the city? Six months ago, a tornado almost hit the primary station, and a commercial building just one block away was almost completely destroyed. What is the cost in today's money of building a replacement station like the North End Station? If we were again to need one in the future? The existing station, primary station is one year away from being 120 years old. These are major decisions that need to be well investigated as they could easily impact Bussiris for the next 100-plus years. Selling of the North End Fire Station is not a pressing issue. The only interested buyers so far are for storage use type needs that would not be creating any new jobs. The need to quickly sell it would be different if a retail business was looking to buy it, but right now, that's not whose potential, the potential buyers are. The building has the potential for the right buyer to be a huge economic boom to the area due to its location on four state routes. It's located in the only three blocks in the city that have frontage on four state routes. Don't be truculent in the decision to sell the North End Fire Station. It's an irreversible decision that could end up costing Bussiris in the long run. So how do we make sure we get to the right decisions for the fire station and the fire department's needs? My suggestion is that council forms a special ad hoc committee for fire station needs. This could include the disposition of existing fire lands, station lands, acquisition of possible land for the fire department, station relocating. Do we need a single or multiple stations? Feasibility to add on to the existing buildings. They could look into grant funding opportunities. They could also ask council to spend money and ask a structural engineer on the feasibility to, could adding on to the existing building happen? A special ad hoc committee for the fire station needs. My suggestion would include one elected member of council. Limit to one elected member to take the politics out of it. My suggestion for that one member would be to place Mr. Myers on there as he has had a lifetime career in working in the fire and EMS industry. I think he would have very valuable insight. The second person would be the fire chief. Number three, I would suggest a fire, a fire union representative. Number four, I would suggest a retired firefighter that was around during the North End Fire Station construction. And number five, a non-elected Bussiris citizen. And for the non-elected Bussiris citizen, Congress has a term called reaching across the aisle. I'm sure you've all heard it. What we should do is reach across the railing in council chambers. And my suggestion is that we could possibly ask Mrs. Slater if she would be willing to serve on that special ad hoc committee. Thank you, and I relinquish the podium back to public lands and buildings.
Does anybody else have any public participation? Mr. Thidoff.
Yeah, so Kurt wants to stack the deck with firefighters and one person from the public. So anyway, um, Tuesday, Mr. Starner.
Can you give your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Right that off, 210 Ethel Street. Tuesday, Mr. Starner referred to public lands and buildings and changed to the rules for the hunting, the reservoirs in Bussiris. And I noticed he, he's got on there that he wants it labeled with the, wants ground blinds and tree stands labeled with the owner's name, and he's added phone number. Adding the phone number, I don't believe would be a very good idea because no one wants their phone number out there to the public, and we've already got the person's name, address, all their info up here at the mayor's office. So adding a phone number wouldn't be a good idea. And I also believe it needs to read that if it's not labeled, the tree stand or ground line will be removed. If you could get them changes on there. And also, I noticed, uh, the ordinance has a, where you can hunt Outlot 590, which used to be owned by the Conservation League out at the industrial park. And I don't believe the Conservation League owns that pond anymore. I think it's owned by a private person that might want to be checked into and taken off of there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Keith.
Mike Keith, zoning administrator. The property at the industrial park is not, no longer owned by the Conservation District. It's privately owned. And that also currently has a stormwater retention basin on it. So.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. So seeing nobody else, I would accept anybody who wanted to make a motion for the approval of minutes for September 19th.
I'll make a motion to accept minutes for September 19, 2024.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, aye, that makes three, I guess, so motion passes. Any, so now, the circulator pump for the splash pad. Is that you, Mr. Dunn?
That's Dylan, he's going to speak to that.
Okay. Dylan's like, darn it.
All right, Dylan Wyatt from McKiever and Associates. So this has been brought up several times since the splash pad was installed. There's two different ways that these splash pads can operate. They can either be a direct discharge system, which is what Bussiris currently has. It is the easiest to put in because they're significantly less permitting. The second option is to have a recirculation tank where the water is treated much like it would be at the pool, and then it recirculates back through the system so you're not using significant amounts of water a day. The problem with retrofitting is that due to the lack of drawings that were used to install the system as it exists today, everything would have to be permitted through Ohio Department of Health. So as a direct discharging system, no permits go through the State Department of Health. They all are handled at the county level just for inspection. If you want to recirculate the water, detailed construction plans, stamped engineered drawings have to go to the State Department of Health, go through their review process, the same exact process that a pool would go through. Without those engineered drawings, basically what we have right now is renderings. When the splash pad was originally proposed, we talked about putting in the recirculation system. We've done one retrofit and another splash pad. Once they got their first water bill, they had Aqua Water, so it was not free. And they had about $60,000 retrofitting their system, which, when you look at the water that the splash pad uses, is not that big of a deal. The problem now is that you have no drawings. In order to do this, there is a good chance that the Ohio Department of Health would make you dig up big portions of the splash pad to confirm what the plumbing is, how the routing works, all of those things, the valving for the system, the backflow prevention, all of that. So you might be partially rebuilding a splash pad, which, at that point, I don't know that it's feasible to do. I don't know that it makes sense to do, but yes, the splash pad is probably the largest water user in Bussiris when it's running, which is not ideal. Any questions on that?
Unfortunately. Do you have questions?
What do you mean unfortunately? Last year, it used, I don't know what the numbers are for this year. Last year was over 2 million gallons, gallons for the season?
Yeah, that sounds about right. I believe, talking with John Ernstberger, I believe it uses about 30,000 to 35,000 a day when it is running.
And that is the cost to the city? We don't push that onto Kiwanis?
That is just the city's water. It is, it is metered. To my knowledge, it is metered because it is counted as, and accounted for water loss. For the water distribution system, they have to do their water audit every year to figure out what their water losses are. It is classified as an accounted for water loss.
Do we all have a ballpark number on what that would be then?
I, we'd have to look back through it. We, we could figure that out for you on a month-to-month basis. Utility Office would be able to figure that up easy enough with the meter readings from John, but I don't know that offhand.
And John would be the one to ask whether or not there's like some issue with amounts of water loss even if they're accounted for? Like, I don't know how that gets checked.
Would, can you clarify a little bit?
You would think since there's water loss, and even though they're accounting for it, that there'd be some point where they'd be like, oh, hold up, that's pretty massive.
Yeah, yeah, probably. But your plant's running at 50% of capacity or 60% of capacity. It's not, it's, no red flags will come up until you're 80, 90% of capacity, and then you really start looking at these water losses. But you're not there yet.
But on that note, we also have other, I shouldn't say three. We always, we also have other places that we do donate services to that don't get metered, right?
I'm not the right person to ask on that. Yeah.
That's all right.
Yeah.
What were you referring to?
There are some. Don't have to list them, but there are some down there.
The water department would have the entire list on that. They have to have it every year for the water audit.
There's some metered that still don't get charged for it. And then there are some that don't get metered and don't get charged.
There would be very few. Again, you would need to talk to John to clarify this, but with, with having to do the water audit every year, EPA really pushes to meter all of your losses, even if they're, you know, they're not technically losses. They're just unbilled water. However, you want to look at that.
And their, their splash pads to the number one usage user of water in town?
If you look at it on a yearly basis, no, probably not. But if you look at it during the months that it is operating, yeah. Yes, it most certainly is number two's Village Nevada. And then you run down through businesses after that.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. So we still need to do a lot more there.
There's some more investigating and some number grabbing to be had there before we made a decision.
Is there any specific information anybody wants to request be found that we did not get?
You think you might have a ballpark range of what it might cost to put a recirculating system in?
Who can get that for you?
That would be amazing.
Yes. Yeah, um, so.
I'm sorry.
So.
We've talked about this, obviously, once this thing turned on, everybody was like, wow, that's a lot of water. So we've talked about it a couple of times. We will do some research. We'll have to talk with State Department of Health because that's really, you know, I, we can price out a research system. That's not a big deal. We know what it'll take to put the plants together for the most part. Really, it's how much are they going to let us get away with trusting that it was done correctly? Jeff Dunn has a lot of pictures from when it was put in. We have the renderings of the current system, but that's, that's all that we have. So we're kind of starting from scratch.
Did the company that put it in do any, have any other stuff that we don't have maybe?
No.
I think so.
I, I mean, you saw everything that they had.
I don't think so.
They had maybe one drawing that had some dimensions on it. The rest of them were just column sales flyers. Artistic renderings or whatever you want to call them.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so at this point in time, we're just waiting for more information on that. Mr. Dunn?
Just a reminder, there is agreement with the Kiwanis on that splash pad.
Yeah. Well, you're next. We're talking about the baby pool. Oh, he's doing that too? Really? He's, he's just going to leave you hanging.
Yeah, I want to talk about, I guess, this splash pad.
If you want to do that, you've got to walk up to the microphone.
No, well, you didn't open it up yet. That's why I didn't get up. You ready?
Okay.
I, I appreciate the engineer's report. I mean, that was, that was very helpful. And of course, then I've got three or four questions here regarding all that. The way, the way this is being talked about, we've had this splash pad for the last 40 years. Nobody knows nothing about it and whatever. And that's not the case. That thing's not two years old. And so I don't under, I don't understand how it wasn't permitted or it wasn't approved by the state or the county or the whoever, and why some of these things that we're discussing, why it's, there's no information on that.
He just explained that because the way that they did it, and they didn't do the recirculating one, they didn't have to go through the state.
I, I caught that part.
Right.
But I'm saying, everything about it, all the underlying work, somebody had to approve that. So I, I don't understand why it's a, it's a mystery out there that what, what's been done.
Mr. Dunn has the most complete information on it. But that was not done by the city. It was done by the Kiwanis.
Okay, but it was done on, it was done on city property.
It, it was a project that was done by the Kiwanis and donated to the city on city property. So there's a, there's a, an agreement, but that's, we didn't really have full control over all of that because that was their project, and it was done with the administration that was not, that is no longer here. And Mr. Dunn has as much of the information as, as anybody does at this point in time. That's what was just shared.
Okay. Yeah, I, I appreciate that too, but. And then, I'm not an engineer, but we've got a pool 100 feet away from there that has a filtering system on it. So is it possible just to connect into that and use the same filtering system at one tenth the cost?
Again, that would be, that would be something that they'd have to look into, but I'm pretty sure it's probably a little further away water-wise for where the one is to the other.
Okay.
So now you're looking at extra pumping and.
And then, I've not, I just heard this number about the 2 million gallons of water, which I can't even put that in my head. But I'd like to know what the dollar value that is.
Well, that's what Chris asked.
Okay. We can't hear, we can't hear back here anything you're saying, so. So is there a number or is that, is that still to be determined?
It's something to be determined.
Okay, all right. Because that's the bottom line. You know, if it's costs extra hundred dollars and it's going to take three years to pay back, that's probably a good value. So it.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay. We're going to the pub, the baby pool. Landon, you got thrown under the bus again, man. Sorry. Or Dylan, sorry. We'll blame Landon, he's not here.
All right, so the baby pool this time. So last year, it was noted in the health department's, county health department's report that the baby pool was not performing as it was originally designed for. Whether that was a pump issue or a difference in piping from what the original design was is kind of unknown at this point. Really, the only thing we know is that it needs a new pump, likely a slightly larger pump to meet the number of changes per hour that the water has to go through, through the filter system. That was not done this year because we were under the impression that there was not any money in general fund. None of this was going to be opened. And this change of component to the pool, again, has to go, it's a pool, so it has to go to Ohio Department of Health. Right now, I have probably three projects sitting down there that have been there for over six months and are not approved, no comments. So if we start something now for design, to get the new pump designed and get the, get it submitted for a change of component to Ohio Department of Health, then yes, hopefully it would be ready for next year. But it doesn't really get any better than that. We can't put the pump in until the health department approves it. It wasn't in the budget this year to do it because at the time, we were not opening a pool at all, so.
So nothing was in the budget yet?
So nothing was in the budget for it.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Do we know if there's grants available for either of these projects? Like, due to, I mean, what they're for and stuff?
I don't know of any, maybe, maybe, but I don't know. I don't know that for certain. With the, with the baby pool, honestly, the cost isn't going to be that much. It's just the lead time and the hassle of doing it. With the splash pad, obviously, that's a much larger cost. Maybe there's a grant available, but honestly, this thing's two years old. Like, this should have been done originally, and that's how they're going to look at it. This isn't a screw-up that we're fixing from 20 years ago.
No.
So I, I don't think it would fare too well when looking, when comparing to other projects.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions?
Sorry to be bearer of bad news tonight.
It's all right. Does anybody else have any questions for him?
You mentioned upsizing the pump. Has something changed to the system that would cause you need to, to need a.
No.
Upsized pump or is it?
This is the part that doesn't make sense. So the pump is performing actually really close to original design. It's kind of unclear whether Ohio Department of Health changed their design standard. They have a range of the number of water, the changes per hour that the water has to flow through the filter. It's within what was designed prior, but that does not meet current design, and that's why it's being flagged. So it's unclear of whether, and I believe we got a new inspector for the health department also, and that's what caught this for the local health department. So, a little unclear. Yes, it meets what was designed. It does not meet what is required by Department of Health. Whether that was something they missed in their original review or whether the rules changed, I'm not really sure.
Well, then my question would be, also, would it be if, if it's because the rules changed, is it because it went without being used? Like, you know, if you close something down for a year, they can, you know, it's no longer grandfathered into the original or whatever?
No, I don't think it would have been that.
Okay. Figure that's, that's a number one question at that point.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no. I don't think that that was the case for this. I think it just doesn't meet what they're saying their design is, what they're saying the requirements are now.
Do you have any idea?
No, 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 you're fine.
Do you have any idea what the pump might cost, ball pump range to cost to install?
Previous, what the other pump costs, because you just replaced it. So we started off last year, we thought maybe it was a pump, that we had a pump starting to go bad or impeller that it cheered off or something along those lines. So I believe the pump was either rebuilt or replaced. I don't know which one. It was replaced. I don't know if you remember the cost of that. I do not. It was a year and a half ago. Yeah, yeah, so I don't know. We would have to look at that, but there, it's a pretty minor pump. I mean, it's a similar, because the baby pool is so small, it's a pump similar to what would be at like a household pool. It's just, you are a public pool. It's not as easy to just swap it out.
Could we also, if they don't cost that much, and would it be beneficial to have a backup pump? So we can switch out so you wouldn't have to do this?
Well, I don't, I don't know that a backup really saves you anything because we've determined that it wasn't. The pump didn't stop working. It just never met design. It still pumps, you know, 80% of what it's supposed to, and that's what it's always pumped. It just, but it didn't stop working.
Do you have a question? Mr. Sean, did you have a question? Okay, because I saw you move.
I have a question. Could you clarify something for me? So this problem wasn't done by this, this administration or council. It was from the last one, so this was kind of laid in our hand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the splash pad was put in a year and a half ago. Yeah, not this year.
Okay.
I guess so, I go.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Wyatt while he's still around? Okey dokey. So next on here, while we wait for more information on that, updates the city hunting ordinance. Who is in charge of that one? That was Tommy, not anybody else, and he's not here. Okay, so if we could make sure that Tommy knows to make note of the fact that it has been asked if we do not have the phone number on those updates? Because that is up here at the office already because they applied. And.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, and that it's been requested that if they're not labeled, that they be removed. I'm going to also add to that, that if it's labeled with a name that's not signed up up here, it's kind of the same as not being labeled at all. You know, like, they need to have the, the name of the people who are actually. Plus, we need to have that Conservation League property, that's no longer Conservation League property, removed from the hunting ordinance. So there's three and a half-ish. Did you have one?
I will echo what, what.
I will echo what Ray said earlier. At the last parks meeting, they did also echo the same sentiment about the phone numbers, in that they would rather it not be on there, just because of issues with harassment between the hunters, didn't quite understand how serious hunting was. So, I don't think that having the phone numbers on there would be a great idea.
So, yeah, if we could, if we could get that information to him, that'd be great, and that way we can go ahead and get those updates created, and we can hopefully have them for the next committee meeting. Mr. Wyatt, did you have something else to add to this?
Greg Wyatt, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I agree with Ray, but I think that if people are going to put blinds up, that they should register with the city, and give their phone number to the city, and not be posted.
Right, they literally have to register with the city.
Right, and the other thing too, is that I understand what Zion's saying, there is some conflict in hunters using of other people's blinds and stuff, alright, and if any blind that's up and not registered, it should be removed immediately.
Yes.
It shall be removed immediately, without any questions whatsoever, because then that's violation of the ordinance.
Right.
But I do believe that phone number of whoever has the blind, should register that, that phone number with the city, so the city can contact.
Right.
And not, yeah, I agree, not on the blind, so, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Does anybody else? Mr. Keith? I think, does this other microphone work?
Should be a microphone back there somewhere.
Bonnie, does that one work?
Yeah, it's got a turn knob.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, I suggest, well, I just remember having tree stands up along Rest Haven, in Castilla, years ago, that a few of the tree stands up there had stickers on them, just saying permit number, and then you call, either the, like the village of Bayview, had a list of everybody that had a permit, and that's how the city would get ahold of somebody that had a stand, or a, well, more specific, ice shanty, on the bay, there was no phone number or names on the stickers.
In all honesty, I kind of like that even better than having their name on there.
So, just so you have the animosity, but then you still have who it's permitted to, and then the city can contact whoever has the tree stand.
Because I know that they have to get the permit through the city, and there's the lottery, and only certain ones, so, yeah, if they, instead of the name on there, just a permit number, actually sounds like a much better idea, that way it's not specific. Come up here, Mr. Thidoff, please.
I don't want to see any kind of added expense on the city, I mean, printing labels, and distributing labels, and.
I honestly think that the owner of the stand could just label it, just, because they should know their permit number.
A piece of masking tape with their name on it, instead of the city.
Right, no, that's, you're.
Printing labels with permit numbers and everything, I don't want to see it go that far.
I'm pretty sure everybody gets a permit number when they get a permit, so.
Actually, it's just a written, like a couple pieces of paper, from the city, it's a, you get a little card that says hunting permission on and everything, but it's nothing that you could attach to your.
There's not a number on there?
Yeah, it's got your name and ID number through the state and everything, but just a simple piece of masking tape, like I said, with marker with your name on it, because I don't want to get too extracted.
Well, I was just going to say, if they're getting these permits though, there should be a number on the permit, and they could masking tape that number, and write that number on there to, you know, that way they don't have to put their name out there, that way, if you and I didn't get along, and I happen to have my tree stand by yours, you're not going to realize it's mine, because it's just a number.
I just don't want the city to have to make labels and stickers.
Right, no, no, I still think that it's up to them to label it. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll go ahead and let this go for now, do we have anybody who wants to talk about anything for open projects?
I had one, but I think I'm going to wait to gather information on that, before I bring it back up.
I will state that I would really like to know what's going on with the land out at the airport, that kind of just died down, and I know that there was questions about what was leased out, what wasn't leased out, and what the airport commission needed to give us, so if we could contact the airport commission, to find out exactly what they needed, and make sure that if they are sending us something, that it's on their letterhead, showing that a vote had taken place, and that it's backed by the airport commission, that would be amazing, because I didn't want it dropped completely, well, it came back, but it wasn't a letter from the airport commission, like on their, on their letterhead, so that was kind of ignored because of that, not by me personally, but, so I just want to make sure that we have everything we need legally, to make sure that we continue on those steps, because I do not want that forgotten about. I just noticed that it had been sitting for quite a while, and we hadn't heard about it again, so, I had asked, and that was what I was told. Alright, do we have anything else on open projects that needs to be talked about? Okay, do we have any more public participation, Mr. Wyatt, I guess, Mr. Thidoff, so you're next.
Greg Wyatt, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. It's my belief that the city should not sell the North End Fire Station. Number one is, the building is more valuable to the city than selling it. Two, the price that was proposed of $263,000, you cannot build a building today for that, it might take a couple, 10, $15,000 to maybe update it, or maybe a little bit more, but to me, to get rid of that, isn't above my opinion, okay? It's valuable to the city, it's valuable to the fire department to store equipment, where they have easy accessibility to this emergency equipment, to, you know, we're coming up on harvest season, you know, they store the grain rescue equipment in that one trailer, that is the most important piece of equipment right now in this whole county, even though other fire departments have it, it's always nice to have extra equipment, and if it's sitting somewhere else in a locked gate, in another locked building, that's not easy accessible, time is someone's life, okay, plain and simple. Two, like I said, the price, you can't build another building, buy a piece of land, build another building for what, the city's already paid and invested in that building, so to sell it would be ridiculous. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Thidoff.
I know Mr. Truca's not here tonight, but I was wondering, while we had Mr. Dunn and Mr. Wyatt, if there was any information that you could share, update on the All Miller Trail?
The new one?
The new one?
Yeah, yeah.
That we're building?
Well, I was just going to say, he's got a thing.
Alright, so, the new All Miller Trail that the city just got the grant for, I just had a meeting yesterday, with Jeff Dunn, and Mayor Truca, to, we're working on the final alignment of what the trail will be, so as a part of the funding, it is all administered through ODNR, and we have to, there's a whole laundry list of, you know, a 10 or 12-page document of, we have different maps, and the deeds for the property, showing proof of ownership, and an estimate from my end, I'm finishing up putting all of those together, as soon as they are all put together, and administration, and everybody signs off on them, they will go to ODNR, and then we're free to start, we'll start working on engineering, to get plans put together.
Can you talk close, I mean, do you can stay close?
Are there deadlines that we have to meet, are we going to lose this grant?
No, so, so the only deadline for this grant is, the, don't quote me on this, I can get you the exact numbers, but the money has to be used by the end of 2027, which is easy to do, yeah, we have plenty of time, my intention is to work on the project, get the engineering design done over the winter, and bid the project mid-spring, so that we can work on it over the summer, so the idea with this path, and how the budget's working out for it, as far as pricing on everything, we're disturbing as little ground as possible, this will be a dig down eight inches, put the path in, try and keep everything level, meander around the trees, there's just not money to do much different than that, so it will be as minimal impact as possible, trying to get as much path for the amount of money we have as we can.
Are we sticking to the original design from the past administration, has any of that changed?
It is, some of it is changing slightly, some of the west side part that went through the woods, I don't know how much of that, the old map was available, how much everybody's seen, but the, we are changing it slightly, we're taking that west portion of the path, and using it to replace the existing path that runs back to Friendship Bridge, basically to keep it from laying with water all the time, and to widen it a little bit, but yeah, for the most part, the concept is staying the same, so, but it is, it is changing slightly, and that was allowed by the grant, the grant itself, the actual application, was that the city of Bucyrus is putting in a path around All Miller Park, that is approximately this long, and that's it, that was, that was the whole description of the project, and they are vague intentionally, from what, that was David Zach that had applied for that grant, they're vague intentionally, to let you have some freedom, the only requirement is that, once we set the preliminary layout, which is what I'm putting together right now, that gets met at ODNR, and that is the project, so.
Awesome, thank you. Anything else? Mr. Finkhauser?
Just wanted to clarify. Other people didn't restate their.
Every one of them came up and said Mr. Thidoff, I didn't say your address.
Kurt Finkhauser, 616 Prospect Street. Just wanted to clarify, because I was followed up with, after I spoke last year, somebody said a comment about stacking the deck, that special ad hoc committee for fire station needs, it would still be reporting back to full council, and full council would still be making a final decision, so I don't, it's, it's just like, kind of similar to the airport commission, the airport commission has people that are airport affiliated on it, and then they come up with an idea, and then report that back to the full council, like you wouldn't, you wouldn't put non-airport, there's a lot of people on airport commission that have planes out at the airport, so, you wouldn't put people on a commission that was special like that, and not have people that were affiliated to that type of industry, or whatever. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, anybody else? Alright, seeing nobody, we will adjourn at 6:43 PM.
Economic Development Committee, October 3, 2024.
I will call on Economic Development Committee to order at 6:43 PM, members present are Vicki Deshawn, Carolyn Shiderman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. Do you have any public participation for economic development? Seeing none, move on to the approval of minutes from the September 19, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
Mr. Kieran?
Yes?
I do have one addition to the minutes, I overlooked it when I was looking at the draft of the minutes, under CEDA, the Cooperative Economic Development Agreement, the second to the last sentence in that paragraph, where it states Keith suggested that Hurley, I'd like to put Sarah before that, some people may not realize, you know, we know who it is, but, just insert that, a suggestion.
Will we have to amend the minutes for that, or?
What I'm going to do is make a motion to accept the September 19, 2024 Regular Committee Meeting Minutes as amended.
Okay.
That's how we've always done that, unless, do you have a different thought there, Mr. Gobert?
I think there should be a motion to amend the.
Okay.
Accept it, and then adopt the minutes, but.
So then, I'll, do I say I want to get rid of my earlier motion?
Correct.
Okay, and now, so I would like to get rid of the earlier motion that I made, and I now would like to move.
To amend the.
To amend the meeting minutes, and do I have to state them?
As follows.
As follows, the insertion of the name Sarah in front of Hurley.
And does that have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, first by Mr. Shaw, a second by Mr. Moritz, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Can I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I second that motion.
First by Mr. Moritz, a second by Mrs. Shaw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to open projects, is there anything anyone would like to talk about?
I don't have anything, Brandon.
Do not have any updates at the moment, so. Moving on to public participation for Economic Development Committee. Seeing none, I will adjourn at 6:47 PM.
Service Committee, October 3, 2024.
I'll order Service Committee at 6:48, members present, C. Aaron Cherick, Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, I, myself, Chris Moritz, Chair, any public participation at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to see if I get approval for minutes for September 19, 2024.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers first, C. Aaron Cherick second, all in favor?
Aye.
Most passes? We'll wait on that, most passes.
I'm still late, I apologize.
Title nine is still not done and ready yet, I will entertain anybody's, any thoughts, anything anybody else has came up with since then?
Since the last time we talked.
Yeah, okay.
Has the administration gotten back to you at all?
Not me, no, so I'm assuming they're waiting on me finishing up, and handing it to Brandon, I'm assuming, that's where we're at on that. So, I'll get to Brandon probably Monday, and we'll go from there. Good deal. Open projects?
Sorry, before we move on, did we look at all the sections of nine at this point? I know, because we only have those, that's why I was wondering if there's other portions that, because if we're fixing it, we might as well fix it all.
We got, but, 905 is out there being, one of the committees is being worked on.
I see, 905, 903, 913.
13 we have.
But we skipped like two, and several others, I didn't know if there was anything else that we really, I never got a full nine to know what.
Right, oh, not, I don't think any of us had, the administration was actually the ones that wanted to work on this, and do these particular ones.
Right.
And then that's what I got this from, is from the administration to do that.
I just didn't want to miss any of the others, if we're changing it, it costs the money.
I can look into it, and see if the administration wants to look into it too, next meeting.
I just figured while they're looking at it?
Yeah.
Other than that, sorry.
Exactly, okay. Let's see if Bruce or Tommy want to do anything with that, anymore with the other ones. Moving on to open projects, any projects anybody wants to talk about? Seeing none, public participation again?
Ken, 625 South Spring Street, I'm curious where we're at with the water rewrite?
As far as for utilities?
Yep, utility, utility deposits.
Part of this, this 902 in here also.
Okay.
That hasn't, that hasn't changed, except for, I believe, basically the motors, there's wording that has been done, I think you've already reset the newest draft of that, I think, you have that one?
I've seen a lined out draft, yes.
Okay, well, it's still, what's going to be until, I'll give Brandon more information, but I don't think any changed on that since the last draft, it's still going to be the same, as what we have posted there now.
Okay, so, I'm, I guess when will there be a final draft, I started this back in January.
I know.
And so, I know it's, I know it's a process, there's a lot of, there's a lot of papers, you know, pages, all that, I guess. I get that, but I'm, I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not feeling it right now.
That will be in Brandon's possession Monday, when I get to it. All, all the 900 I have.
I want to pause. When you, when you were talking earlier about 903, 905, I didn't know there was a number attached to that, or, you know, I, now I understand that, so, alright, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any more public participation? Seeing none, I will adjourn at 6:52.
Health and Safety Committee, October 3, 2024.
I call the Health and Safety Committee to order at 6:50 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Ciara and Sherick, James, me, and myself, Vicki DeShawn as Chair.
I'd like to point out, if I could, your clock is three minutes slow at 6:50. The last meeting ended at 6:52 is the only reason I'm pointing that out here.
Alright, I'll change that. So what is correct?
6:53.
6:53 is the correct time I've been given.
It wasn't right.
Thank you. I'll have to get my clock up to date here. First off, we have public participation. Anybody wishing to address the committee, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no one, I'll ask for a, oh, I'm not doing this properly. I'm going to go ahead and do it this way. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the September 19, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting.
Ms. DeShawn, I would be glad to make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 19, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting.
Do I have a second? Motion by Sherick, second by me. Roll call. Sherick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn, yes. Motion passes.
Ma'am, I'd like to vote yes, too.
Well, I'm just batting a thousand here, aren't I? See, you had me all befuddled when my clock is not right, okay. You voted, Kevin?
Can I apologize for starting out all meetings like this by not remembering, entertaining a motion to, and I think if you're ever going to after that, I'm sorry. I will call it as well.
Alright, open projects. Are there any open projects that anybody on the committee wishes to talk about?
450 Dudley Street, is that on here for a reason?
450, excuse me, go ahead, Erin.
I was going to say that was the house that they were checking that they were, needed to be torn down, but they had everything stuck and limbo.
And I think because there wasn't money.
Well, it.
To do the asbestos removal.
It wasn't owned by anybody that they could do anything with at that time, was last we heard from Mr. Gerner. Like, there's relatives, but the original owner's gone and deceased and.
I don't think they're back due on tax.
Yeah, right, it was, it was out, it's literally in limbo. And I'm pretty sure that Brandon's never been hit with 450 Dudley to know.
And this isn't.
This is my first time hearing about it.
Merry Christmas.
This is not a property that's been turned over to the, okay.
No. No. And there were squatters and trash, and it was unsafe conditions, but other than that, we, there was nothing anybody could really, it's literally in legal limbo.
So I guess, what is there for us to ask to be done, or?
If I remember correctly, it was brought up months ago because of the condition of it, that it had been run through the law director's office for potential violations. They were attempting to try to get a hold of next- or kin-type people because the, it is not owner occupied, it wasn't at the time, probably still is not. And they were not able to, to be in contact with the proper people, I guess is what, what I remember of it. Does that sound right, Jim?
Yeah, so do we want to keep it on the open projects?
I, I think it behooves us to leave it on there at least to allow, you know, we've got new people in a lot of positions. Mike probably hasn't heard about it yet either.
Yes, I am familiar with the property. There's quite a few violations.
I know that we have a microphone there, and I know that you were given permission to speak from there, but if you don't mind, I would like to ask you to come to the podium, only because I don't want anyone to think that we're showing favoritism to.
To Mike.
Employees and not to the public, and I do appreciate it, thank you.
We need to remove that mic then. I know there's quite a, there's a few violations on the property, just speaking to Gordon and Landon, and I know there's paperwork. I do believe there's paperwork down in the, the office, but I'm not sure what status is of it, so, but just my short time here, I have heard of that property. So, that's also in the vicinity of another property that I heard about today. It's not a property, but it's just, it's a safety issue, just there's some low hanging cable or telephone cables that are hanging really low that are within arm's reach in that neighborhood, and it's from when they did the street improvement, but that's being taken care of through Jeff's office.
Vicki, you have a question on the mic, so if I can.
Sure.
Speaking of low hanging cable, there are various places in town where there's like the ball of cable dropped down, and I noticed today, there's, there's actually one that came loose that's down out by Besar's Road Materials, and people are asking if those are safe, if they're unsafe, like, I mean, having anything hanging down the ground's unsafe, but.
This all falls under Army Fiber and Bright Speed Installation, and that's an ongoing issue, so I address, does everything else go through? Tommy's, Tommy's darn it.
So the next question is, is, do we know if those are, because they're hanging next to each other, if there's any current or anything that's able to, because I had a lady ask if her kid was safe.
Not with fiber optic. Not with fiber optic line.
So just to make sure it's, it's up here, so that people understand that it's not that their kid's going to get electrocuted if they run past it, or, you know?
No, not with.
Because that was.
Not with fiber optic line or, or cable TV lines, phone lines.
Because that, that was one of the big things that somebody asked me today.
Yeah, fiber optic, you won't get.
So, so just because they're connected up there, they're not conducting anything?
As far as I know, it's no.
Okay.
Bye.
Thank you, I'm sorry. That was just.
Okay.
While he was talking about the cables.
Yeah, I mean, you can go up and just touch a fiber optic line, you just don't want to break it, or it'll be our business.
Thank you, Mike. One open project that I would like to talk about is the Trap Neuter and Return Program. Next committee meeting on October the 17th, we are going to have Susan Fritz and Becca Green from the Trap Neuter and Return Program come and speak. I also will be reaching out, I have spoke some to other individuals that have come before and spoke, and have indicated that they would like to also come at the same time again when our Trap Neuter and Return individuals are speaking. So we'll have a, a number of individuals, well, let's see, when I say that, we'll have Susan and Becca, Mr. Jakonowitz, I've invited him, Veronica Caldwell, or is it Victoria?
Victoria.
Victoria Caldwell. I will be reaching out to her, Darla Lewis, and I believe that's it. If I missed someone, I apologize. I'll check my notes, make sure that they are contacted and know about the October 17th.
And would this be a good time to just remind people that that also includes, then, the animals that are on the list that can't be having in town? So if they had a, an argument for that, if they wanted to give us a, a letter or an email or come in and talk, that'd be great.
And also includes dogs, dog barks, dog bites.
There we go.
Other than that, that's the only thing I had to report out for tonight. Anybody else on open projects? Public participation again? Mr. Thidoff?
Ray Thidoff, 210 Ethel Street. I was wondering how one property can take precedence over another property. As you know, Vicki, I was up here complaining, probably this year again, but I've been complaining for quite a while, about a property on the corner of Inez and Reed Street. Will this Dudley property have to go through the same process that the property in my neighborhood has to? Because if the property on Dudley gets torn down and mine's still sitting there, I don't understand the process.
Vicki?
Erin?
I would say that the property on Dudley has been being brought up since Mr. Truka sat here beside me.
It's about the same time I started complaining about mine.
And I know it was brought up before that, like, something had happened before I was even on city council, at which time that that started.
So will that property have to go through the same process?
It is going through all the same processes.
Through the courts and up for sheriff's sale and all that good stuff.
Yeah.
And I know, Ray, that this evening, I did, did double check the Crawford County Common Please website to see where things stood on the property that you're speaking of.
I greatly appreciate that, too, by the way.
Thank you. Nothing has happened since the last set of copies that I printed off for you to show you where things are going. I can double check with the prosecutor's office to see if they'll, but I'm sure they're probably gonna, as they did before, just say, you know, go to the website.
Right.
There explains, you know, what's.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? See no one. I will adjourn the meeting at 7:04 PM.
Plating Committee, October 3, 2024.
Plating Committee will start at 7:06. Members, Ciara and Sherick, Carolyn Shireman, Vicki DeShawn, James, me, Chair. Is there any public participation for plating? Approval of the minutes for the September 19, 2024 Regular Plating Meeting?
Mr. Me, I would like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes for September 19, 2024 Regular Plating Committee meeting.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
All those favors?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Changes to BCO 1189.03B, general resurfacing. So we had talked about that before, and we were talking about the ad hoc committee, the ad hoc committee for zoning that would interfere with this, it will not, because it will be grandfathered in. If there's zoning changes made, you want to speak to that? You good?
Sorry, Dave, Jim, I'm sorry. That was for the.
Ad hoc?
No, it's for the zoning.
Sorry.
It's for 1189.03, general resurfacing.
I can't speak to the resurfacing.
Okay.
I'm not involved in it.
Okay. So it won't have anything to do with the ad hoc committee and any changes that they make, because it will be grandfathered in. So I'd like to have a motion to push that up to full council.
I move to, well, I guess, I'm going to say I move to request that legislation for the amendment of Bucyrs Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1189.03B.
B.
Sent to full council.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, it's going to full council. Amendment to the Bucyrs Codified Ordinance, including ponds, we're going to get that legislation soon. We haven't got it yet. I also have on your Ethel Street Alley Vacation, and I want to table that because they need a signature from the railroad because it butts up against the railroad. And Mr. Mike Keefe would like to speak.
I sent a letter to the area right-of-way agent for NS later part of Monday afternoon, and due to events in the south, I do not think I will hear back from her anytime soon because of all the wreckage that was destroyed in the hurricane. So I sent a feeler email auteur this afternoon to see if we'd hear from her anytime soon, and I, I haven't heard from her since, so it's up in the air.
Okay.
On who we would be getting to sign off on that vacation. So I had some experience dealing with CSX on this issue, vacating an alley in the, at the township and county level, but they usually just had a yard master on a Willard sign off on that issue, so I'm not sure for Crawford County who that would be. So considering we just, McKeever just finished a boundary survey showing where the NS line goes through downtown, I'll reach out to Dylan and Isaac to get their contact for that and see if we can get this taken care of next week.
Good.
Since I will not be here the, the next week at council. So, anything else on that?
No, we're just going to table it for now, and.
Okay.
We can bring it back up at any time.
Okay.
I just want to leave it in plating for right now.
Alright.
In case it comes back up.
Alright.
So we good?
Any other questions on the Alley Vacation?
You guys have any? It's on Ethel.
Ethel Street between, well, between Ethel and Highland, just north of the NS track. It's just a very narrow strip of an alley.
And is this just going to the property owners, or?
Yeah.
And are there multiple property owners?
There's, there's only two property owners. The property owner that requested the vacation, their garage is presently over the alley, and when it was built, was also on land owned by NS. So technically, they're encroaching big time.
It is, oops.
And so they, basically, are going to have to get a, most likely a split from the railroad to get this fixed, so, and that can be a lengthy process. But we just need the railroad to sign off on them acknowledging and not having a problem with the alley.
And then the other two property owners are all in agreement, are okay with it, or?
So far.
So far.
Three of the four, and we're waiting on the railroad, so. Everybody else at the city's signed off, all the utilities are signed off, and you have that for me, and, yeah?
Okay.
Anything else is taken care of?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else want to move here?
Well.
Go ahead.
On open project, or not open projects, or yes, under open projects, I do have a question that'll require Mike's answer, so if you'd like to stand, then, thank you.
Open projects?
On the open projects, we have signs in the right of way, and that was when Mike came and, you know, gave his talk of, you know, that those signs are not allowed there. There's nothing for us as a committee to do on that, so, is there?
I would say, I thought we'd pass that out. That should have probably been scratched out of our committee then.
Yeah, so it's on our, it's still on our open project list, so.
Miranda, would you be so kind as to scratch that from our list?
I, I do have a question. Have you been noticing more and more signs? Have you been noticing more and more signs that need to be?
Oh yeah, about campaign signs in the right of way.
Yeah, that'd be, so just so that you're aware, as I see them every day pop up right on the corner. And there's-
With everything else going on, I haven't had a chance to get out and pull them.
There is a garage sale sign that keeps popping up at Holy Trinity?
Garage sale signs.
No, no, for Arrowhead. So that was, Arrowhead's not near Holy Trinity Cemetery, like, it's very confusing to everybody passing that there's-
They requested information about the garage sale for that, and I told them that it had to be out of the right of way. And if it's on the cemetery side of the, of the sidewalk, they're fine.
As long as the cemetery's agreeable.
Yes.
But yeah, we were looking at that and that was the first thing that was, I asked the other day was, is that even supposed to be on this end? They, it was literally like, did somebody steal somebody's garage sale sign and put it out here and we're waiting to see or is this actually?
They, they, they called. I think it's the only, the first garage sale I've been called about for a sign. Just to let you know, somebody asked me about putting a sign at the, the triangle with West Irving and Nevada Road, and that's not in the city. That's on, so if anybody ever asks you guys about that, that's, not even in the city. So, I didn't even know that until the other day.
Is that it for Mike?
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
A letter from the Seventh Day Adventist Church. Are we doing anything with that?
I believe the last update was that Mr. Starner was to send out a letter to Teresa, I believe, stating that we had removed the welcome signs.
Are we done with that?
He did not send out a letter. I actually received an email from her and responded and then told her that we have since removed the wooden signs.
Okay.
Yep.
So we, we can have that taken off too, correct?
Yes.
Awesome. Anything else you guys see? Removable, removal of the property on Lutz Drive. Is that done yet? Anybody know?
I think that is the property that is owned, that's the property that we want to swap with the Crawford Park District. We have land on Kerstetter and we're going to give them the Kerstetter land and they're going to give us the Lutz property land.
I remember, I just wonder if we're done with it yet.
Well, we're done with what we're supposed to do. I keep checking the auditor's website because my concern was when we passed the legislation stating that we were going to transfer that land over to the Crawford Park District, I'm like, well, the Crawford Park District, have they done their deal where they're going to transfer the land to us? I mean, I wanted that to be simultaneously so that we didn't record our document and we don't have our land, but they don't record theirs and we're sort of out of a loop, if you will, or, I don't know. But anyhow, I was told because the Crawford Park District has a new director, that that's why nothing's been done, because he's just new, getting up to speed with what, you know, he needs to do. I did just check the other day. The property that's owned by the Crawford Park District is still owned by him. We still own our Kerstetter, so at least they haven't recorded our deed for the transfer. But there needs to be the transfer from the Park District.
Mike?
And I don't even know if they've even signed-
The agreement yet or?
A deed.
Just to let you know, the, most of the property transfers showing up on the auditor's website and the GIS, most of the updates are residential properties that are updated every night or every couple of days. Properties for commercial and government properties, I don't think show up right away. I've found this out all the years I've been surveying, they don't update them right away. They have a process, they wait until I think everything is processed. So, because I know some property that the state owns has yet to be updated on the auditor's map.
I'll be happy to personally go to the auditor's office and check to see if, you know, the-
Well, that's, okay. Well, all I want to know is, you want to leave it on here until?
Oh yes, oh yeah, I want to leave it on, yes.
We'll leave it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
So, BCO 1189.03 is on here, we better wait till that gets through full council before we take it off.
Oh yeah, yeah.
If anything else stays.
I think we're good. Any others open projects, is there any public participation?
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. I just had a question, I know that the whole zoning ordinance was moved to be on ad hoc, right? So it's no longer in this?
We're having an ad hoc committee to discuss zoning in this city.
Zoning in the city, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait for them then, since it's not here anymore, right? It's not with you, it's with the other committee?
Yes, it's with the committee.
Okay.
But I invite you to come.
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll come. I just meant like, I'll wait for my question then.
Okay. Thank you. Any more public participation?
No, I was just going to say, it's a short trip. All right, something I wanted to bring up, I had an issue with it today and we're going to have to follow up on it, I wasn't sure if it was for plating, but it has to do with the zoning. So, per Chapter 339 of the city ordinance pertaining to commercial and heavy vehicles, under Section 339.02, Section A, use of local streets, no person shall operate a vehicle exceeding a size as specified in Section 339.03 or exceeding a gross weight of five tons upon any street in the municipality other than a state route, with exception of local streets that are designated as truck routes. We have an issue in town where people are parking excessive weight commercial vehicles in their driveways that are damaging city alleys, curbs, drive aprons, and sidewalks specifically. So, the, the administration, well, my office is going to be notifying commercial vehicle owners and the companies saying that they're going to have to be required to park their vehicles out of a residential area. Because they're doing damage to the infrastructure, the alleys, sidewalks, curbs, aprons as such. Just want to let you know that.
We can't, we can't discuss it.
Oh, he asked the question.
We can't discuss it.
Uh-uh.
I caught that earlier.
Yeah.
And do you want to make any comment about the ad hoc? Or do I, or can I?
Yeah, yeah.
The ad hoc committee for the reviewing of the zoning laws and map, we're going to try to convene in three weeks, the week of the 21st of October, or, yeah. And that will be in the evening, hopefully at sometime between 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening, so everybody can be, be there. And-
So it's October 24th?
Please?
You said October?
The week of, we don't know what day yet.
Okay.
So-
We'll talk to Miranda about that.
Once that information will get posted public.
So you're going to be back off vacation by then, right?
Yes.
All right.
Because I will not be here in two weeks.
I just asked that you let me know that we had to contact everybody.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Public participation, one once, going twice. Adjourned at? What time is it?
7:24.
7:24.
Finance Committee, October 3rd, 2024.
Call finance order at 7:27 PM. Members, President James Mee, Christopher Moritz, Vicki DeShawn, and myself as Chair. Is there any public participation for finance? Seeing none, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from September 19th, 2024, the regular finance committee meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 19th, 2024 regular finance meeting, committee meeting.
I'll make a second. A motion by Mr. Mee and a second by Mr. Moritz, any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Mee?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, motion carries. Mr. Mee, any open projects you wish to discuss?
Not really, I was just looking at them, but-
Mr. Moritz?
Not being done.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Just want to run by the committee some that we can take off. Purchase of a slide for the pool.
Yeah, that was a, a quick thought and it was dropped. I thought we had already removed that, I'm sorry.
Purchase of property being the old YMCA.
I think that left this committee, so that can be removed.
The 2025 OPWC grant, that was due to prepare Tuesday.
Got legislation for that.
And the transfers appropriations for the purchase of property, which-
Didn't come to fruition.
Right.
So all four of those can come off.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else?
Nope. All right, one last timer in the room, Mr. Mee.
I'm good.
Mr. Moritz?
I'm also good.
Mrs. DeShawn?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, any public participation for finance? Seeing none, roll adjourn at 7:28 PM.